You guys are. Okay, we're live. Good evening, we call our facilities and finance committee meeting to order. Let's see, we're going to have the pledge right away, let's do that. Just to clear up Jim, this is P and P, right? You know, I did it again. And you know what the problem is? I did this last time, yeah, there, there, I pull up the first one. Okay, called to order the program and personnel committee for Monday, September 12. Just a note, we're starting a bit late tonight, we just had a wonderful visit to the Libertyville High School's new prairie classroom. Just outside in a courtyard here, so had a really enjoyable time. Seeing the work of the students and the community and people involved with that over the last four plus years, so. You ever get a chance, stop by and see it. What the agenda? This is weird. Yeah, this is weird. I don't have the.
Do you have to hit join the meeting? Oh, because now we're on.
Know what I'm doing. Okay, okay, first off, we're gonna start off with the invitation for public comment, anyone care to address the committee? No, we have some visitors, welcome. And.
We didn't receive any.
Okay, so nothing that'd be an email either? Okay, then we'll move on for discussion, employment of employees. We have a handful of things here, anything to highlight here? We haven't had a chance to review these. Okay, these will come up for as part of the consent agenda in a couple of weeks at the regular board meeting. So we've all had a chance to go through here, we have educational tour requests. A whole bunch of educational tour requests, which is great.
Yes, we have eight listed on the docket, the eighth one will not be on the consent agenda for next week, we're still waiting on some of the funding details for that, but the funding for the other seven have been verified. And a good portion of them are using their student activities accounts. And they all have enough money to to cover the expenses they need to get started in terms of like booking rooms and flights, so. I did have one question about the baseball, and then I learned all about how the baseball boosters are funded, and so they're gonna be just fine. So, thank you.
Is there any questions from board members on these? Have a chance to look more.
Is that eighth one the marching band to Rome?
Yes, and so that is quite costly.
Twenty-three, twenty-four, so they're they're looking way ahead.
Yeah, yeah, and they're thinking of starting to do some fundraising now, and so they're going to get in touch with the current graders that would be attending this field trip, so they can get started on that soon.
Those overseas ones take a while.
Yeah.
Coordinated, but I love seeing them, you know.
You see any of the baseball one, that three thousand dollar cost to the district, that's so that's from their student activity account, each each team gets its own.
Yes, and so there's student activity accounts that the district budgets for, and then there are different student activities accounts that that's what their fundraising monies goes into, and so the majority of these are using that activities accounts, and so I'm trying to figure out that, you know, it would it would be nice if they were named something different, so we could tell the difference right off the bat versus having to look into. Well, actually, I just bothered Darren and he looks up the accounts and tells me, but yes, they use their fundraising student activities accounts.
Okay, yeah, because when it says just cost to the district, that that's like one of the first things I look at, obviously, and if it doesn't kind of delineate it that way.
Yeah, I can, for future reference, I can have, we can delineate that and make it more specific so that you know.
Yeah, I thought I thought there were some trips that the district does cover at a hundred percent and some that are generated by individual funds from participants, so like the math trip. It says that it's a complete cost to the district, is that because if they have to qualify for it and they're they're going and representing the district?
Yes, that's a competition, or for instance, the journalism one, they collect money from advertisements that are placed in the Drops of Ink magazine, and so the money from the advertising that they collect is used for their annual journalism conference.
So like the math team, they're going to state competition, all-state musicians, obviously, you're going to state the stage players are going to Allstate Theater Festival. Some things get paid and some things the students have to fundraise.
Yeah, I would add on to what Casey said, I I think it's actually a great idea to be more specific than district expense, because of course, everything is a district's expense, but if it's budgeted and coming from a previously approved budgeted place, that's different than, you know, a straight-up district expense, which somewhat gives the impression that it's an additional non-budgeted.
Correct.
Expense, so thank you for being more specific with that, because it'll avoid a lot of questions. Unnecessary question.
Yeah, we can do that, and I'm still learning a lot about the add tours, and so I'm I'm having a lot of these questions too, and so we'll we'll be making some adjustments.
Okay, thank you, and you know, we're we're relearning after not having these trips through the pandemic, so we're also getting back up to speed. Looking at these when they when they come up for approval.
Thank you.
Could you clarify one disparity that I saw? And this may speak to what you were saying about different accounts being utilized for different things, but I was struggling to actually pull up itineraries and budget sheets that were hyperlinked on four docs, which may or may not have anything to do with anything, but my question was, there's a large disparity between the cost of the Vernon Hills softball trip and the cost of the Libertyville baseball trip. And it's just, it's, I'm just kind of looking for the reason as to why that would exist, because they're they're somewhat similar trips, so in lieu of not having the budget sheet or the itinerary available in front of me, do you do you have a quick explanation for that, or could you maybe get that information later?
I can get that for you, I have some thoughts as to why that is, but I'll confirm.
Okay.
And then I can have it to you for Monday.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Are you talking about the cost per student or just the overall?
Per student and district, district costs.
Yeah, because there's a significantly different number of students going, so that.
Yeah, that may have something to do with it.
Something to do with the transportation or something.
I, yeah, I wanted to look further as to see, you know, what the accommodations or flight costs were, what exactly is causing the difference? Like, like you said, you'll have the information eventually, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, I have some thoughts, but I won't, I won't share until we're confirmed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sands, just any any other questions or comments related to that, so okay, then we'll move on. For the first reading of a board policy. Just one?
Just one, so this policy four twenty is currently in our board policy as transfer of funds. Press has made recommendations that this really should be policy four twenty fund balances. And this is a, you know, policy that we've been looking to update. And so this is a recommendation for this policy to look at the maintaining fund balances. At, you know, adequate to ensure the district's ability to maintain levels of service. And looking at this, that the fiscal year and operating fund balance to expenditure ratio of no less than twenty-five percent. I know there has been discussions from, I think in the past for previous boards, and what, you know, that kind of fund balance is, but this policy then would set that at the lowest twenty-five percent.
Yeah, and this sort of a timely, because of the way that we've just recently shifted our how we account for fund balances and whatnot at the end of the fiscal year, so that's timely, so all the, just make sure all the underlined text is new.
The, so, or is it? Yeah, everything that's underlined in blue is new.
Yeah. Somewhere where we identify though a percent? Is that in some other?
We currently do not have one, and Dan, what is the recommendation by the by ISB or fund balance?
Yeah, so first I would say the underlines are really to show, like, the district does not have a fund balance policy, so four twenty is the common number associated with fund balance policy in press, we just have a very, very old standing policy of interfund transfers that actually are already accounted for in a separate policy. So this is really the right spot for it, in terms of, forgive me Jim, were you asking where does the twenty-five percent come from?
No, I I was under the impression we had put something in writing in some policy or administrative procedure or something about a percent expect expected as a fund balance, maybe four or five years ago, six years ago?
Uh, no.
Talked about it, I know, I don't know.
Yeah, there's nothing in policy that I am aware of that we have, like, we've we've talked about this kind of a policy a few times, and we just weren't quite ready to that. So yeah, so to my knowledge, there's not, there's not a written written number somewhere else.
This is important as we go to look at capital projects and funding, we have to have this policy in place, it goes hand in hand with it, so I appreciate that we're.
It's a bit of a gray area.
Getting it.
P and P and F and L.
I know, exactly. Crossover, it's a crossover event.
Maybe if I could provide just a little bit more transparency into the language that's in here, so especially that middle paragraph, I chose all of those words very carefully, so that we're clear about what we're talking about, because when someone says fund balance, it's hard to know what they actually mean. And so usually you have to kind of flesh that out, so you, our fund balances, well, what funds are you talking about, like, which funds are you including, so I tried to clarify, we're talking about operating funds. Because you could have other, you know, right now, we have, there is no debt service, we have no debts, we have no debt service fund, but should the district have that, you know, that would not be included in that, there are some districts that have a very high debt service fund balance. For, could be for a variety of reasons, but we took steps a few years ago to take the extra money that was sitting in debt service, and we we moved that out essentially. I can't remember how long ago we did that, maybe that was a year ago or so. So really, yeah, so those those are the funds there, and then also in terms of how, what the calculation is, it's fund balance to expenditure ratio. When you're also asking a fund balance percentage, the next question, the percentage of what, is it a percentage of revenues, is it a percentage of expenditures, the way I drafted this is a fund balance percentage, percentage of expenditures, which is typically how we have showed. That's how we talk about fund balance percentages, that's how we've showed it in our long-term projections, so that's the consistency that I I brought to this policy. But depending on what you're looking at, there could be a different definition that people are using for fund balance percentage, so I wanted to be clear about what this includes and what it doesn't include.
That's, that's, that's a great point, and that's actually, it could answer a lot of, you know, concerns or questions that people might have, some some funds you can't predict what percent just because of the nature of what they're used for, but operating fund certainly, and that's the big one, and the 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 primary, and the fact that it's against expenditures, not against budget, not against some other, yeah. No, this is, I I appreciate that.
And and also, like, for example, too, that the reason why we combine them as operating, because, for example, working cash, that fund actually does not have any expenditures, you legally can't expend money out of that account, you can only transfer from it, so we include the balance that's in there, because that's, we can use that available in terms of transferring or something like that, or the word is abating. And then I'd say another thing I would just wanted to point out also in the for transparency, so is that second sentence in the second paragraph is what happens if the fund balance, so if we set a target of twenty-five percent, well, what happens if it goes below? And so oftentimes, you'll see in kind of standard policies, they just say this is our target, and they give a range, and then they leave it there. But I just, I wanted to get a little bit more teeth in there, just if it falls below, that something happens. And this is kind of a really, a basic level of what happens if it falls below. I did not write anything if it's higher than that. So, you know, that's definitely an option that you could, but for this, for this draft, I chose not to include that. Because that's a, that's a bigger, potentially a bigger discussion than something that I could just draft for you.
I have kind of two questions, one is like I think where you were going with this is where did the twenty-five percent come from? And then second is where you are going again, is if twenty-five percent is really our lowest threshold, should we have something we start doing before we get to twenty-five percent, like, is there another, let's say you're at forty percent? Should we start taking some actions so we don't get to twenty-five?
Well, I mean, if you're saying that, if per the language of the of the policy, if you're saying that you seek to maintain a ratio of no less than twenty-five, then in theory, as long as it's not less than twenty-five, there's nothing wrong. But if you're trending in a direction that makes you think you're gonna get to less than twenty-five, that's probably a prudent place to take action, so you, you know, you could add language of like, it's projected that we'll that we're gonna do this, rather than wait till after it happens.
Right.
Right, because this technically says, this is technically assuming it happens.
Right.
Right, so you could you could, you could do that, although you, I'm just, you want to be careful with projections, because projections don't always translate into reality, so the one thing in the back of my head is, if I was projecting something like that to happen, and we try to project accurately, I I would not want to inadvertently cause distress in the organization for something that doesn't actually happen. So, but, you know, we try to have accurate projections, but they don't always work out exactly as we project them, so that's just a one thought around that, in terms of the twenty-five percent, I think that number just comes from general prudent financial management, there's it would say it's it's not, and it, and it, it, it really is a number, I think that's probably the lowest comfortable that I personally feel, just to make sure there's enough room in the bank so that there's no cash flow issues. It starts, the really reason why you're concerned if it falls lower is cash flow. And that's something that I don't anticipate us really ever being in a position of being concerned about, there's other districts that certainly have to watch that, especially come in the spring, but we've not, we've not for the, the time that I could view our actuals that we've had that issue. Similar to, if you think about, like, I try to translate a lot of this to personal finance, right, with they say, if you don't really have savings, what's your first step, first step is to get a thousand dollars saved. Your next step is save a month's worth of expenses, your next step is to save three months' worth of expenses, and really, they try to get you up to six months or more if you can, right? But here, you're trying to find a balance of, we don't want it too low, but we also don't want it too high. And I really care about not have it not making sure it's not too high, because if it's too high, to be quite honest, then you're not really using it for the students that are here now, and that's really the point of getting the money in, because really, it's the local community that's funding this. And if we're just sticking it into the bank, that doesn't really serve the kids that are here. So that's why I wanted to be clear that you could definitely put a, if it beyond this, then this will happen, you know, I first drafted like, well, anything below twenty-five, we'll have a plan to get it back to twenty-five, anything over twenty-five, we'll commit to capital projects. That basically means you're always gonna do something, because it's, it's never gonna be exactly twenty-five, you know what I mean? And then if we, if we commit all that money exactly to twenty-five, and then the next year, just something slightly weird happens, now we're under twenty-five, and now we're potentially creating stress in the organization, because our policy would kick in and says, no, we have to get this back to twenty-five. And that could affect services somewhere else, so I didn't want to be a little, I didn't want to I didn't want to jump the gun too much on that.
Dan, I think that you run the risk if you try to do too much anticipating within this, I mean, this is a policy, this is supposed to be a guideline for where our threshold of pain is, that kind of thing. If you try to be too prescriptive, and okay, it gets below forty, and it gets below thirty, and then, in my mind, you're getting into what we would typically consider an administrative procedure or something to that effect, where it's an operational thing that that it would be who viewed to let us know, hey, you know, we're sort of trending this way or whatever, but to put that in policy is difficult to to be too specific, because I don't know, maybe I'm I hope I'm making sense.
I, no, I I was thinking the same thing, I agree that policy shouldn't be overly prescriptive, I think the administration and the board need need to have the ability to consider all of the factors involved in any decision. And accept a recommendation or move towards a decision based on the exact circumstances that are in front of us, as opposed to trying to anticipate what that might be and put in place steps that have to happen. You know, for example, I would say that we've known at least since twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen that ISB's recommendation was, I believe, twenty-five to thirty percent. So my point, and you can clarify it, I'm not getting that figure correct, but we've sort of known as a sort of a standard operating procedure that we would not want to fall below that, so this is codifying something that we were aware of, both based on Dan's administrative recommendation and the board's agreement that that's a good guideline, as as Dan said, you don't want it to be too high, because then you're not spending money for the benefit of students. But if it's too low, then you're not being fiscally responsible, so I think this this sweet spot, it's great to codify, and I think you did a really good job of condensing what what our current operating guidelines have been, based on your recommendation and the board's agreement with you. Without going too far and being overly prescriptive and leaving it in your judgment and our and in ours to respond to exact circumstances, and as we well know, you know, we've received money early that we weren't anticipating or more than we were anticipating, sometimes it's less. And we've had to respond to things like a pandemic that we weren't expecting, so that there are so many factors that we don't control that impact our expenses, that I I think this this goes far enough without being overly prescriptive.
Casey, I've been curious to hear if you had any any thoughts as the facilities and finance chair, from a financial perspective, if you have.
No, I I agree with Lisa that you don't want to be too prescriptive, because there are things that happen, you know, I mean, let's use the LHS flood a couple of years ago, where you can't make it so prescriptive that you can't loosen funds to deal with unforeseen things that happen, whether they be mother nature related or otherwise. But since I've been on the board, I feel like twenty-five percent has been our comfort number of being good stewards of taxpayer money, we want to make sure that those fund balances are adequate to address needs and that we we are taking care, taking care of those funds appropriately.
Jim, in response to Dan's recommendation, he talked about paragraph two, sentence two. So press, press recommends just really having sentence one in there, and Dan's recommendation, our recommendation is to put a little bit more teeth into it with that sentence too, that if it does fall below twenty-five percent, so press policy really just says the district seeks to maintain, you know, a certain percentage, period, and and that's their recommendation. And so I just wanted to share that with you, when press is recommended.
And just to be very transparent too, like, the first sentence is not worded exactly as presses standard language is, so this is my modifications to that language. I guess I didn't think to show you that here, just to kind of give you the draft. I'd say the other thing, the the question of what is ISB recommend? I don't know that ISB has like a specific written recommendation, and actually, if you look, if you just start Googling policy four twenty, like I did, you'll start to see numbers all over the place, you'll see a lot of the standard press policy, but you also see some districts that have put a lot of thought into this, probably sometimes a little too much thought into it, and they have all kinds of, all kinds of things in there. Some helpful, I think, and some not as helpful, I think. But in terms of the twenty-five percent, so what ISB, what ISB does is ISB will rate districts on financial strength. And I would say there are two applicable metrics that they apply, one is days cash on hand. And if by the end of your fiscal year, if you have less than a hundred and eighty days cash on hand, you get knocked down a score, so in order to get the strongest score, you have to have at least a hundred and eighty days cash on hand. Now, because we're talking about fund balance, and because we defer our spring taxes, the days cash on hand at one eighty is not going to be an issue. Because a lot of that cash is there as of June thirtieth, because we get the cash May. The second part is, they look at a fund balance to revenue ratio, which is different than this. And that's, that's honestly just my professional opinion, is that I I think for us operationally, using, doing it based on our expenditures is a better choice for us, mostly because of the control, we have outside of your levy, which you have a lot of control for, but even that has a lot of guardrails around it, right? There's not a lot of control we have over the revenues that we receive. But there is a lot of control over the expenditures that we have to a certain degree, now, we delegate some of that control, right, because we have a union contract, we have different contracts to different legal obligations, but largely we have a big, we have a big influence on our expenditures, much more than we have on our revenues. Just think about yourself, right, how many different ways do you get money? Right, and but then think of how many different ways you spend money. Right, it's all over the place, unless, well, it used to be, now it's just Amazon, but like, it used to be more places, right? So, no, no different than an organization like this, so that's at least where some of those numbers come from, and just some more thoughts about it.
I went down that rabbit hole today looking for anything I could find about policy four twenty. The ISBE has a fund balance to revenue ratio category is one of the four things that they look at to rate districts, and they say, in order to be in the highest category, category four, you have to have greater or equal to twenty-five percent in order to be considered the lowest risk. So that's kind of a standard, then, if, because it does say twenty-five or above, and then the next category is twenty-five to ten percent, and the next category is ten to zero.
And and that's absolutely true, the one, it's not really a concern ahead, but one one nuance, I would say, is their fund balance to revenue ratio, they don't include all the funds that we include on operating, and my my standpoint is, I really think our operating funds, like, we have a lot of flexibility in terms of how that money is in there, so I guess what I'm trying to say is I'm including all of our operating funds. If you wanted to, you could try to game the system and hide money in other funds, that ISB is not gonna count, I'm not interested in that, so I'm trying to be very clear about this is really where I'm saying from an operational standpoint, all of our money is, because really, in all of those funds, yeah, there's some money that's restricted there, but I know, I I know how to I know how to transfer the money, either either we can transfer, I know how to eventually get that money into somewhere else in another operating fund, so I want to be clear that you know, this is really all of the money, and it's really, I think, a protection that, like, you you're not really hiding any other money at this point, you can't, based on, based on this language. Whereas with the ISB rating, a real savvy person could try.
I think we'll easily meet the ISB. You know, those, those, those ratios by doing this, I I just think it is smart to do the expenditure versus the the revenue, because revenue is not predictable, you know, we've seen years where we've gotten they've delayed revenue distribution, and it winds up in the next year, that kind of thing, I just think it's a, it's a smart move, and really, a more realistic picture of what are, what that, the health of the the district and the health of the fund balances are.
Yeah, I was yeah, our just looking at the score ratio. Just looking at the score ratio. Oh, yeah. So last, yeah, it'll, it'll, I was gonna say last year's looked very high, but that's before we have our change in accounting. So. I need to get the new year's AFR to really see what those numbers will look like now going forward. So.
Okay.
Before we move on, I just wanted to say thank you to Dan because I, I really do appreciate how we use press as a guideline, but. Um, the ability for our administrators to use their expertise to customize these policies to meet the needs of our district. Is really important and, uh, you did really good work in crafting that distinctly and, and precisely. For us. So I'm very pleased with it. Thank you.
So much for anticipating one policy being short.
It's a big one though.
Okay, um, anything else?
Uh, I was just gonna say thank you for helping me understand the context. This is my sort of first foray into. This type of policies.
And from a practical standpoint, the way you'll see this workout is every time we have an annual financial report and every time we have financial projections, you will see it almost like the very bottom. Will be what's the percentages and what's the projected percentages? So like if I see it starting to head in the wrong direction, you know, I'll, I'll be the first to tell you.
Okay, uh, next on the agenda, resource conservation.
The reason, um, this is, so this policy was brought up, um. In our last, uh, go around, and so we had some questions that were, were raised regarding some of the, um. Specifically really looking at, um, like number three, um, in the policy. So we wanted to go through that again. And answer some questions. Um, and I know Mark is also here to help answer some of the questions that we.
Yeah, one of the things, so I'll, I'll turn it over to Mark in a second. Ask Mark to just kind of put together a sense of. Like what is currently really happening in our system when it comes to recycling and, and waste management? Um, so that's really what we asked Mark to just come and just try to walk through what's happening now. So.
Um, so at both our schools, um. Close enough. How's that? Okay, um, we do have recycling programs at both of our schools and, um. Um, we are set up for waste, uh, very similar at each school. Um, recycling in Libertyville, we have a ten yard dumpster. Uh, that gets picked up two times a week. And that's mainly used for. Uh, cardboard and packing products and stuff that from all the deliveries and kitchen supplies, things like that. The classrooms and offices are, are done by students on, so that dumpster can be utilized in the summer. You know, for office stuff and, and in that, so it, it can take glass bottles, same thing at both schools. Um, it's a full recycling container, but the majority is cardboard during the normal school year. So we have recycling program at Libertyville, um, where they pick up on every Tuesday from the classrooms and offices. Um, then for our regular waste, we have a thirty yard compactor, uh, here at the school. Um, so all the other waste is generated can go into the compactor. Um, then we seasonal, we do landscape, uh. Uh, landscape waste, so branches, leaves, things like that, that come down. Uh, our contractor that does around the schools at both schools. Uh, they, they obviously they load the materials in their truck. They do. Do pick up, uh, of our leaves and stuff like that, and they do do some mulching and they do do a bagging of, uh, of lots. So it Vernon Hills differences, Vernon Hills has a six yard dumpster instead of a ten. Um, they don't generate as much. For some reason, it'll generate as much cardboard and, and stuff in deliveries. Um, and their student program is, is run on Thursday mornings. Same system where they go around and the students go around and pick up stuff out of the classrooms and in offices. Um, they also have thirty yard, uh, compactor for the rest of the waste and also use landscape. Landscape dumpster, you know, seasonal when we need it. So. That's basically how we're doing our recycling, um, at both schools. It's set up the same in the district office. We have individual, uh, bins underneath our desks and, um, custodial staff separates that. And they put it in a tote out behind the office. And then a couple of times during the week, um, staff will come over in a cart and they'll pick up the recycling and throw it in the, in the large recycling bin. At, at Vernon Hills. I'm sorry. Yeah, they pick it up from, you know, and take it over.
So do they do like plastic and glass and?
Yeah. So anything generated in our, in our kitchen, you know, when people have food and stuff like that. So, yeah. They'll take the, the plastic, the glass, uh, the white paper, um, all the paper that's shredded. All gets thrown in those containers and it goes into, in the recycling bins. Recycling bin at Vernon Hills.
So do kids go around and pick up the like plastic and glass and, and aluminum cans that get thrown away during the lunch hours? Where is that? How does that get collected?
Uh, that our staff will collect that, um, during the day and, and that's where we hope that it's not commingled. Um, where people are throwing garbage, a lot of times, um. They'll throw garbage into it and. Yeah, but we have, they have separate bins that, that are for recycling. Or for plastic and, um, and aluminum.
So when the kids are going around, they're just picking up paper from the classrooms. There's no.
Uh, there can be. Plastic bottles, yes, anything that's used in the classroom. So as long as it's recyclable material, it goes in the bin in the classroom. Um, uh, as well as in the offices, anything that's recyclable goes into those bins and then, you know, they come pick them up once a week.
How does it seem to be working?
Uh, seems to be working fine, as far as I know, um, I haven't heard any issues. I know they did try to, at Vernon Hills, they did try to do some kitchen waste. Um, um, with the solid waste and then didn't do composting and.
You're doing that at Vernon Hills, weren't they?
They were doing it. They're not doing it anymore. It was.
Tried it for a year.
Yeah, it was very time consuming and, um, I don't think they had a lot of participation. I'm not sure what all transpired, but. Um, they dropped the program this year, um, and are. Working heavily on the, the classroom recycling and offices.
And I think, I think even that program was largely student led.
Yeah, that program was student led, you know, as part of the group, and I think they, they were focusing on that, uh, last year.
Maybe this isn't, uh, like something that needs to take up time at a, at a board meeting, but I would be interested to know like. How often does the, do the roll awake compactors go? How often do we fill up a recycling bin? Is there any advantage to making it part of the infrastructure for the staff instead of having students do that work? Uh, is daily collection better than weekly collection?
So I, I could support gathering that data if. The point was to update the goal in number three.
Right. Cause right now I.
To, to gather the information just for our knowledge.
Oh, no.
Wouldn't be something I think you would suggest, but I, I feel like we. Missed an opportunity by adopting a second revision last month without updating. Some new solid waste production goals.
Right.
In our policy, which is from twenty twenty, and I, I don't know how I sort of dropped the ball noticing that when we adopted the second revision.
Same.
But if we were going to gather information, I think it should be for the purpose of an updated. Recommendation for number three.
Right, because number three says a fifty percent reduction in the amount of solid waste. If we don't know how much we're collecting right now, how do we know how we're going to reduce that? And what does it mean to reduce?
Well, and I could even give you some history. So like that. Like if you look at the, the dates, at least they're attached to this. So you can see like the last time it was revised back in two thousand nine. So back in two thousand six. Is when the new public act came out that basically wrote that in there. Um, and so that, that was, that was based on a public act in two thousand six. So it's been around. It's not something that was new. Um, it's been around since that time. Um, and then even, if, even if you look at that section, not that sentence that says the fifty percent reduction, that was new for sure in twenty oh six. But if you look at the broader section of that law, it's not very long. It's a few paragraphs. If you look at that broader section. That's been around since at least ninety-six that I could find. Couldn't find really helpful. Uh, public act information before that, but basically what I saw also in two thousand six is a lot of those. If you read it, there's different thresholds for like recycling. They want to have a certain percentage of recycling. Uh, if you looked at that two thousand six update, it basically was the nineteen ninety-six law with updated dates. Um, so it seemed like, you know, um, there's a goal set out. It seemed like there was a goal set out in ninety-six and then in two thousand six, they updated and. The dates are further out, you know, so that's like what I noticed in the law. Um, and then that's when they added this twenty twenty thing here. So it's not something new to an organization. I mean, like, it's not something new to school districts. It's not like if this is within the last few years thing, like it's been around for a long time.
I, I'm imagining the school board that adopted the policy back in two thousand nine. Trusting that whatever school board was seated by July first, twenty twenty. Would, in fact, look at it and then set new goals. So I think that's probably on us. To ask if we all agree that we would like that information at some point. Um, to get updated information so that we can set a new goal and a new date, um, even if we're not the board that seated. During that date, um, just as this date was not part of the board that adopted it. Um, their purview, I think, um, is something that we might want to consider.
Yeah, even I wasn't around then. I think, well, not here.
Yeah.
In, in my mind, this was sort of probably an arbitrary. Who says fifty percent, you know, they, they, they wanted to put a stake in the ground. At, at some point in time to say, look, we want to do this. And they figured, you know, that's far enough out, but really there's so many other variables too. You can't just say, we're going to cut a solid waste in half. Fifty percent, nineteen ninety-six. Vernon Hills High School wasn't here.
Right.
So we're now operating two buildings and there's no way you could then reduce to half of what one building used to be. So it's, I, I think there's, you know, maybe we should. Think about or, you know, maybe have the administrative team suggest. Some metrics that we could put in here that would be more realistic and more appropriate that we could monitor and not just. You know, kick the can down the road and say, you know, in ten years, we're going to reduce by fifty percent. Well, that's all well and good, but. A lot can change in that period of time.
We do recycle in other ways also. I mean, it, on the B and G side. We have, you know, pallets from deliveries. We set to the side and then we, you know, have contractors come by that recycle those and pick them up. Um, and then if there's any metal waste, you know, we'll set that to the side. Those type of things and just throwing it in the garbage. We try to get it back, we get it back into the system, we set it out and then they, you know. Uh, have people come by and, and, and pick it up and then they recycle it, take it to a recycling center.
And, and looking at the, you know, the current policy, where I think what Dan also referred to is what the, uh, in our policy, if you click on. For the ILCS, um, the legislation, the legislation refers to, you know, has numbers in there that started way back in nineties. And this, uh, sent in, in number three is the exact sentence from. The legislation, so that, uh, the waste, you know, reduction procedures must be designed to achieve before July first, two thousand twenty. So the. Public Act has not been updated to reflect anything. So. I mean, can we look at other things for our policy? Absolutely. This just mirrors exact language from. The Illinois Public Act, which hasn't been updated.
And that avenges the honor of the board that, um, adopted this policy that they didn't just pick fifty percent. They actually were following Illinois school code.
Yeah, our goal would just be to try to do what we can to reduce whatever's going into our waste stream by. Hopefully diverting it into our recycling stream.
Uh, IT department, you know, every year they're recycling and they're sending off items. Uh, we've had, when we've had furniture changes, um, and desks. We've, uh, let other schools know things are available. Sometimes we have schools pick them up. We've actually, when we got one, a bunch of the classroom desks, we shipped, we had a company, they took it for free, they shipped it overseas. Trinity, I can't remember the name of the, the country it went to, but. Now, that was another way to recycle and, and put to, put it back out there, you know, for somebody else to use.
Yeah.
So you could, all those little things add up and I'm sure we've. More than hit the fifty percent over the years. You know, when we're recycling started and this whole program started.
Absolutely. There's a lot of good work that's being done, that's environmentally conscious, especially with recycling. So we appreciate that and. We rely on you and the administration to tell us what's realistic as we look to set a new goal for our policy.
Could, could I offer a suggestion? I, I, I think, you know, I'm kind of reading through some of the stuff and. To be very clear, recycling is not by strength, you know, numbers are more mine. Um, but I, I think maybe one thing where that would be helpful is to. Is to memorialize what's actually happening, like, uh, get it drafted up for you. So I, I wanted Mark to just kind of explain what's happening. But then I'm hearing this and I know there's other things that we do that aren't, we didn't just say it like, I know there's a lot of things that are kind of all over. And so I kind of want to. Want to gather that and just, just write it down. So in shows, so I, I almost would like. Proposing idea, let us create a report to, to show what's actually happening. And I think that's very doable to see what's all out there. And there's a lot of people that are involved. In a variety of ways that we don't always know, like even between us, we may not necessarily know. And then maybe helpful to know. Um, you know, I'm reminded of, uh, when we went through the strategic planning, where are you now and where do you want to be? Let us, let's get a better idea of where we are at right now. And then I think that's a good starting point to talk about where do we want to be.
You know, we've, we've talked a couple of times about items that we are disposing of. And we've said, we kind of want to get an idea of where are these things going? Do these kind of go hand in hand if you're already creating? You know, we talked about possibly seeing some kind of a accounting or not an accounting, but just. I mean, I'm assuming many of the things that we're disposing of are recycled. So. Could these not, could these two not be married somehow?
For sure. Yeah. And, you know, we have definitely have not forgotten. Actually, that was a conversation this month about like, do we? Do we, are we ready for that yet? And we're not, and we're track, tracking for that to be for next month to the. Um, so when we have disposals that the board approves to then come back and say, because it says like what could happen, let's circle back and say what actually did happen. Um, so just as a reminder. So, yeah, so we still have that on, but yeah, that, that's all part of it. Um, especially if those. I mean, if they get scrapped even because scrapping is not, not, that's not just throwing it away.
Right.
You know, right, or, you know, so.
You know. Where were we at when this in two thousand six? You know. I haven't seen any, you know, base point for us that, you know, how do you quantify getting that fifty percent? Without having any information and, you know, did they have compactors back then? So how many times is garbage hauled away and? So I think for sure we, I mean, we're doing a good job. Um, could there be improvements in places? I'm. I'm sure there are, there could be. So.
That's why I think let's get some more data and more of a report for you about what, where are we at right now, um, with some more. Data that I don't, I don't know what it is yet, but.
Yeah.
We're kind of talking, we'll involve the broader leadership team too, um, about something like that.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Okay. One more bit, there's, uh, number four on that says adherence to energy conservation measures. And that seems really vague to me. So what do we mean by that? Uh, how do we measure it? We've talked about, uh. Reducing our carbon footprint in order to be good global neighbors. Um, this seems like a place where we could put a metric in. Where we could make some measurements and then some decisions about how to reduce the carbon footprint. We've actually already started going down that path. We're going to hear from Veragey or about Veragey later. But I would, I would like to see something much more specific than that. So I offer something like. The district shall seek to reduce its fossil fuel energy demand through improved efficiency wherever possible and through onsite, uh, production of sustainable energy. As a possibility of something that we could say there. And then provide some sort of metrics, you know, what are our goals? Can we reduce? Ten percent per year or it it. There's lots of ways to go about doing whatever that metric is going to be, but I would like to start looking at that. We could use carbon as a metric. We could use. Uh, cost as a metric, um, but. I would like to see something in this policy that explains exactly what adherence to energy conservation measures means.
I think there's a lot more work to be done in this policy.
And then I have two more. Um, so conservation, resource conservation is the general topic, but we don't mention water anywhere in there. So some districts monitor how much water they use and then look for ways to reduce the amount of water, potable water that they're using or to. Find ways like we water our grass, I think with lake water, don't we? That, uh. That field, that field right over there, I see a hose that goes out that goes into the lake. Is there?
They that, my understanding, they stopped using the pond. Uh, years ago, uh, because of the water quality coming out of the pond. But at Vernon Hills. Um, we draft from the pond, the park district as well as Vernon Hills High School for the V hack. Um, which actually has an eleven hundred foot well. Off an aquifer. So when the pond goes low in the summer, when everybody's drafted, there's a well that actually keeps the. The pond at a level, so we are doing over there and unfortunately, that is a pond that is. A lined pond. Um, so we'll hold the water. The school actually uses for bass fishing and for the outdoor classes and stuff, that's, um. Just, uh, east of the football field and that vortex.
I think to your point, there's probably a lot of things that come under the heading of resource conservation that could be. You know, how fuel efficient are our buses? Oh, you know, there's.
Right.
A bunch of things that come under.
And then the last item would be, uh, ways to reduce runoff. That's actually already happened on this campus. Um, the bio swales that are in that were cut into the new, uh, parking lot by the pool. Um, so there was an area where specifically the contractor designed. To capture runoff so that it would recharge the aquifers. Um, and it's funny because I was thinking we don't. The the last thing we want to do is to. Keep groundwater here because we have a natural spring that feeds the school, the basement of the school. I would like to see us start to bottle that water and sell it, uh, cat water or something. Um, it's got to be clean. Yeah, have you been down there? Like there, there's waters that just like pump it out, is it twenty-four seven? We have pumps running. Yeah, it's, you should go on a tour, like the basement tour. It's something.
Just want to be clear, it's perfectly safe.
It is.
But there is water, yeah.
It's perfectly safe, but we can joke about it.
Well, it it is a problem, but I mean, generally speaking, groundwater depletion is a problem everywhere and any place that people can do things to. Trap water on property rather than letting it run off. You know, that that's a good thing, so, uh. I would like us to have some sort of a statement in there that says that we are going to attend to. Runoff and try to trap whatever our hardscape here is because we have huge parking lots and all that water goes somewhere. Uh, even our turf grass, uh, the, the, uh, ratio for runoff. For turf grass and concrete is very nearly similar. Um, so we lose just as much water running off of our football fields as we do running off of. Um, and I would say our natural grass football fields as opposed to turf fields. Um, but I would like to see us doing something to capture runoff. And now I'm done. I reserved my time.
No, those are all great points. I think there's a lot, it, I mean, this is obviously a day.
I I'm sorry, I'm not done. Uh-oh, there was one more. So I was looking at other people's. Can I capture that time back? Uh, I was looking at other districts, um, conservation policies and I ran across a statement from Oak Park River Forest that I really liked. And theirs, they essentially make a collective commitment. A strong commitment on the board and the administration is important to an effective energy management program. It shall be the responsibility of each district employee and student to actively participate in the conservation efforts. In order to reduce consumption to levels prescribed by whatever. But the idea that we're all going to help and I I would not necessarily make it just energy, like we're all going to. Try to recycle, we're all going to try to, you know, bring in our waste batteries, not throw them into the garbage cans. We're. All going to try to reduce our water use, like we're not going to leave the faucets running when we brush our teeth, that sort of thing. Um, but I like the idea of having a collective commitment in that policy that says. We're going to work on this together and we're all going to be responsible for it.
It's a great idea. It's not just Mark or Dan or whatever.
No.
Everybody.
Are you saying I shouldn't throw away batteries? I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Well, that's one of the things that came to mind right away is when they said, and there's a lot of things that are people are doing that we don't even know about. Our tech guy was collecting batteries. And so everybody in the building just kind of knew to drop the batteries off with him and he was bringing them to the local Ace Hardware. And it just became a a thing that people were doing that was institutional, but it. Wasn't on paper anywhere. There wasn't a program for it. It wasn't. But you're right, there's probably things that are happening that we don't even know about. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? It's good. Okay, thank you. More to come on that policy. This will not be up for first reading this month. Um, but some work will be done. Next on the agenda, the, uh, Community College District five thirty-two, also known as College of Lake County, uh, intergovernmental agreement.
This is very similar to the intergovernmental agreements that we've already, um, established with District sixty-eight, District seventy, District seventy-three for data sharing. And so now, um, College of Lake County has, uh, asked for the same for us to to move forward. So. Um, I did run this again by our attorney. Um, it it's very similar language to the other ones, but I did have him also look at it. We are, we have his, uh, approved law.
Yeah, I think it's a great thing. We'll, we'll learn a lot from it and they'll probably learn a lot from it too.
How often do they request? Like, have we entered into an agreement with them before?
So, no, um, we have not entered in an agreement and part of it is that, um. With the law that passed, I think a year and a half ago, in order to share data, you have to enter an agreement. So. I think now that everyone is entering the, um, into these agreements and will follow the safeguards for the data sharing. I think there will be more sharing of data and hopefully, you know, everyone will be able to gain some more knowledge.
I'd be interested to see what comes out of it.
And obviously, you know, if you also look in there, our data custodian is our director of data assessment, Charlotte Eames, so. Now having that person too for us and district be able to, you know, work with our center schools and work with College of Lake County, that'll be helpful.
It's great. Any other questions on that? Okay, that'll be on the agenda to vote, um, in a couple of weeks. Uh, anything under a future agenda items that anyone has to offer?
I have two future agenda items. Both are good news to share that we will hear at the regular board meeting next month, but they are too good not to share with you right now. Um, first, the, um, Communications Director, Mary Toderick. Received an award of excellence for a recent podcast episode. Um, from the National School Public Relations Association. Uh, the topic of this podcast was, uh, Equity Focus, the Student and Staff Affinity Groups. So, uh, Mary hosted it and, uh, Brian Toderick. Was the audio editor and then we had several staff members. Um, Avalino Cortez, Rebecca Garcia, Madeline Hall and Sean Woody who participated. In the podcast as well and, um, receiving the, um, Inspira Award is a big deal. So congratulations to Mary. Um, the other thing I'm pleased to report is I received a letter on Friday. That our Board of Education is one of thirty-three in the state to earn ISB's twenty twenty-two School Board Governance Recognition Designation. So congratulations. Um, that award, thank you. So that award acknowledging school boards that have engaged in activities and modeled behaviors that lead to excellence in local school governance. In support of quality public education. So you all should be very proud of that. Um, we will be formally recognized at the Fall Lakes Division Meeting, which I know several of us will be attending.
Maybe you'll want to consider attending, work.
Yes, um, I think it's going to be a a nice event, uh, generally, but, um, the more of us that are there to accept that recognition, the better. And I think it's, it's nice, we, we. We spend all of our time focusing on students and the business of the school board. It's nice that, uh, we received recognition. For our good governance. Um, so congratulations to every one of you that would, which would not have received the award. Without each of your individual efforts that lead to our collective good governance. Uh, and of course. Without the amazing district leadership team, we wouldn't be able to do our jobs. So thank you to everybody. Um, who supports us, especially the district leadership team. So those are two future agenda items that we're too good not to share with you now.
And thanks to Lisa for her efforts in documenting and putting all the information together along with. I know Denise and others at the, uh, district level, um. For putting the things together, the the information together, uh, that was required to, uh. Apply for this, uh, honor. That'll be great, that'll be great, so. I encourage you all to attend. Any other future agenda items?
I may have one, um. I have a note here about the D one twenty-eight school safety website, um. And I think at the last board meeting, it was said that it will be going live soon. And, um, I just, I think we could use an update perhaps of when did it go live, when does it go live? And what, uh, kind of information it contains specifically.
I know we have another, we have a. Board policy we're going to be looking at, several of us are going to be looking at, that will come up.
Yeah, I think I can give an update at the next. But we are still working on that.
Thank you.
Anything else? We will adjourn the, uh, program personnel at, uh, six fifty-six. Thank you. Anyone need a quick break?
So I'm just going to ask, is there going to be a break?
I'm good to go.
Shall we roll on? All right, calling to order the Facilities and Finance Committee meeting for Monday, uh, September twelfth. We've already done the fudge, um, invitation for public comment. Is there anyone here who would like to offer a public comment? I'm assuming we don't have any emails either. Right, nothing?
There are no communications.
Okay, great. Uh, moving on for discussion, uh, capital projects update, our little summer wrap up.
So we wrapping up our summer projects, we're behind on a few. Over at, uh, at Vernon Hills, um, the window project is complete. Um, totally complete. Um, the masonry and roofing are tied together a little bit with the flashing. So they're still doing some flashing pieces and some masonry around the front entrance. Um, they would have been done this last weekend, uh, but with the rain came in, um, prolonged it a little bit, but there's just a few punch list items there. Um, the coating, the EFS coating on the tower. Uh, at Vernon Hills High School on the fly tower for the auditorium, that job's completed. Um, we've run into delays over here at Libertyville with the fax labs. Um. Started off with some delays with some stuff that was under, under the ground that we ran into and presently we're, uh, waiting on the. Cabinetry. So. We reversed, I reversed, uh, the process that we were working on and said, let's concentrate on getting. One room and the pantry open. Um, so we changed gears and 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 talked to the cabinet maker and gave him a deadline. Um, to have the cabinets completed for that. Uh, we met with the ROE. Uh, last week and showed them where we're at, um, so we could get, uh, partial occupancy on the project. So, um, um, they came and inspected and so. Uh, we have partial occupancy for room one forty-one and also the pantry area and then a little bit of cabinetry and. Um, we put a washer and dryer in, um, in special services room. So we have partial occupancy on those three rooms and, um. We're moving boxes over right now. We did final cleanup over the weekend. Our staff came in and and worked to clean the area. And the teachers are going to be setting up. Hopefully we'll have a first class in room one forty-one sometime this week. Um, our deadline that we've given to the cabinet maker. Um, for all the materials on site, uh, this was September nineteenth. Um, and for the contractor to finish up and get us to punch list, uh, items, uh, we're hoping. That we can turn over space somewhere the week of September twenty-sixth.
Mark, could you speak to, was there anything specific, was there anything specific that impacted the delay of the project?
Uh. The, um, the main delay would be the cabinetry. Um, the initial delays in the be, in the beginning of the project, uh, underground, I mean. Those could have been, those could have been overcome. These cabinets should have been made ahead of time and ready for us. Um, so I see that as, uh, as. The main issue. We had flooring, we had other materials, everything was ready to go. We, that was, uh. Um, we didn't even have an issue with having light fixtures delay, which I'll talk about. Um, you know, transition pathways. Um. But, uh. The big one was, is the cabinetry.
The reason I I asked that is just because like. We've been experiencing a variety of delays and all kinds of things for all kinds of different reasons. Like, for example, like we had furniture because we added more staff to the district office that we ordered back in. I don't know, April, and it got delivered today. So, and that's, you know.
Yeah.
Kind of wood stuff, you know, so it just seems like that there's. There's a constant thing of delay, like drivers that we ordered a driver's ed car a year ago and we, it still doesn't even have a production date assigned to it, so.
I was, as Dan's referring to it, we ordered the furniture. Um, we had deadline August second. For the project and we actually, we thought transition, but there was a contract things and the things that went on with transitions. Um, all the furniture for both those products has been warehoused since August. Um, so to get this classroom, I, uh, to send me twenty-six chairs. You know, they, you know, I only need twenty-five, they come in boxes of two, send me twenty-six. I don't have a place to store it. You know, can you please hold on to it? Let's get this room open. Get things moving and then we'll, we'll come up with the date for the, the last delay and same. Um. Uh. So our furniture and that stuff is, hasn't been an issue, uh, the things that we're seeing it, um. On this project here. So.
What are the teachers doing in the meantime?
Just going to say that, what are the, how are they accommodating the kids?
Um, they were able to find a couple of classrooms, the administration worked to do temporary spaces. We moved, uh. A microwave over, uh, refrigerators and other things for them to, to, um. Teach class and they've been discussing creative ways, um, you know, do outdoor cooking. They've been discussing all kinds of other things. Uh, as I'm trying to get something moving for them here. Um, you know, all our appliances were, were ready, you know, at the, you know, in. I hate, we had to take delivery. They sat in the hallway for quite a long time, uh, but we had, so they didn't sell them. So we did our part on the things that we could do, you know, um, but unfortunately, this one. One, uh, part of the project is delayed. Um, so. And we've set goals several times and those goals weren't met.
Well, kudos to the teachers for.
Yeah, then the teachers and the administration, they worked, worked great to, to. And we were there to support and be as far as B and G, you know, whatever you guys need, we'll get what you need and we'll, we'll set it up. and we'll we'll set it up in a classroom for you and so you can move forward, so. Just always, you know, projectors up in the classroom, so we're ready. As I said, we're moving boxes over. I went, I went over to sort boxes while you guys went in the courtyard, because I've been out in the courtyard before, so. So we're getting those over so the teachers can get the the classroom set up, so. Sorry to be real long-winded on that. The transition pathways is is moving along well. Walls are studded, drywall's up. I, they should be done with the taping and be ready for painting of the drywall this week. We we have some setbacks in the flooring and the light fixtures. The flooring, they keep pushing a date. We have a commercial grade flooring. We compared it with the residential grade. And with the amount of traffic, you have to stick with the commercial. So that's one thing that's it's holding a few of the trades, we're working around that, putting everything we can do beforehand, before the floor goes down. And then the light fixtures, they keep bumping the dates on the light fixtures that we're supposed to be here, you know, in the end of August, and now they're saying the end of September. So mid to end of September, they they give you a date and then they change it again. Well, we're looking at, we should have substantial completion by last week in October and have punch list items and be able to get partial occupancy and and get moved in. We have all the furnitures in the warehouse. We have our appliances already. The commercial commercial appliances, I believe, are also ready. There was a little delay in the hood, but I think that has been settled. Trying to get the door open as quickly as possible for the program there. That construction is actually getting, there were some underground things that put a were probably about three-week delay behind in construction, but then it's some of these other products now that have come up that are slowly chased down for completion.
Our original goal was though for completion by September, right?
I'm sorry.
When was our original completion goal?
It was the beginning of mid, mid-September. Mid-September was the original completion goal. But we had the delays when we went to the village and we changed properties. And then, then it was the permitting. There were some, you know, it took the extra time for the permits.
I think I already know the answer to this question, but there's no financial rebate to us when a supplier does not meet or even come close to their delivery date, because these are considered supply chain issues. Is that correct?
Yeah, there's, unfortunately, at this point, we did, there's nothing, you know, that we can do.
Got to ask, but like I said, I I kind of knew the answer to that question.
That's our project update. Any questions?
I was just thinking with your story about the fax labs and how all the students, the teachers are trying different ways. And it's like such a good case study for daring, right? How are, how everybody involved is being so nimble and creative and so, good job to everyone.
Yeah, I believe they also were looking at, how could you use a concession stand out by the by the stadium? You know, is there a way that you can do something out there, you know, under the shelter and do barbecues or, you know, that type of thing, so.
Smart, let us know the date. Anything else? Okay, moving on to prioritization of capital projects.
Yeah, so now that negotiations, budget, all that stuff is done, we're reverting back to other things that we were working on. One of those is capital planning. So I attached for you the presentation back, hard to believe that was January, but that's what the date says of the presentation that we had. My, I'm not planning to review that presentation other than just to provide that with context for really the capital planning criteria. So one of the things we walked away from that meeting was the reality is that there is not enough fund balance to do the things that everybody wants to do, right? The list that we have of remodeling that we had back then, which would be very similar to now, there, there's not enough funds to do that without having to borrow money in a variety of different ways. And so the reality that we face ourselves with is that we have to prioritize. So I, in in some ways, it's not that much different than the strategic planning, for example, like we started with twelve goals, which is great, but you can't do all of them, so we ended up focusing. And so the idea is, well, we can't do all of these projects, so how do we focus in on which projects to do or which come first? And that is a process that we've really never had before. So it was trying to come up with a way to prioritize them. And so what you see in that draft capital planning criteria is really a first, truly a first draft of criteria by which we can essentially score each project to see in order to prioritize it, essentially. And so we really, a lot of it honestly started with questions that, what what's data that we think we would like to know and be helpful? So I went back, reviewed our meeting. We had a lot of great suggestions there. I referenced a lot of other resources, tried to reference other schools. Some places, they talk a lot about capital projects and running capital projects, but there's not a whole lot talk about how do you prioritize it? They just say prioritize it. And sometimes that's just like, well, what do you want to do? And they say, I want to do this, but okay, now it's prioritized. Well, we want to put a little bit more teeth to that process. So we, and so really Denise helped kind of help really get it organized in a, in a, in a in a helpful way, because mine was all over the place, of all these different data points that I think are helpful to know based on things we've talked about. And so she helps, helped me see categorizing them in the really three areas. One, I would call is organizational alignment. And so that we're really trying to ask, how do the, how does that, how does this project align with our daring mission? How does this project align with the three, the goals of our strategic plan? And it could align to all, all of them, right? Or you could have one that aligns more or less, and in the sense in terms of the description, what we're looking at doing is how much does it align with? Not, does it a lot? Not a yes or no. It's a scale, how much does it? So you'll see that how much frequently throughout a descriptor, meaning to try to articulate, we're trying to get a range here. It's not a binary answer. So organizational alignment to big picture organizational alignment. The next one was student impact. So we're really curious thinking, the number of students that are impacted by a project. How does, how does the, how does the, how does a particular project impact students academically, socially, emotionally, and behaviorally? We thought those were all important points to consider. And the next one was really about system improvement, and there, there's a lot of things there that could, that's where things such as long-term financial benefit, that, you know, is there, is this some, is this a project that could save us money over the long term? If we want to really think about it, right? Or ADA accessibility, is this something that will improve accessibility for our buildings? Is this something that will help in terms of sustainability, energy conservation? So tho- those were the areas, something that will help us be more efficient with our system, right? Right, right now, for example, practically speaking, our schedule in this building is largely limited by the number of kids that we can feed in the lunch period. Right? That's, that's a, just a practical reality. So is the project that we're looking at, like, how many students can be impacted by that? How can that affect our service delivery? What more flexibility does that give us, you know? So we're trying to, trying to find ways to articulate kind of what we're talking about when you could look at a building and say, what's your, what's your most important thing? Well, this is my most important thing. Well, why? And sometimes that's harder to answer. There's probably a lot of reasons you can, but try to getting systemically there. So this is our first draft of this criteria. So really, what what I'm looking for is just your initial feedback to this criteria. Do you think this is criteria that represents some of the things we've talked about, if you can remember eight months ago? But also now that you've, you're seeing it again, you know, is there, is there something, and this thing's missing? Or I don't understand this, you know, feedback on that criteria. And then and then the next process is we will need to wait each of these things. So you score of them, but you have to wait them, meaning the hard part is waiting them. So the best example I could give is when I was hiring John Heron, who I have right now. I had thirteen people that I, that I interviewed, because on paper, like, they all looked the same. Like, how can I tell? And it was really hard for me to figure out. I remember talking to my wife, like, like, what am I really, what am I really, really looking for? And she helped me develop a rubric about like, what is most important to me, right? Is, is it somebody that has a good experience, good reputation in the industry? Is that important? Yeah, that's important. How important is that? Do they need to have a CSBO? Do they need to have all these other things? And it really helped me understand what truly is important. And the waiting was probably the biggest the biggest impact on the final results, right? So for example, if you rate daring, daring mission alignment, that's the most important thing. That's a five, right? So if you want to give that, and then say we have a score, then so the the waiting is one aspect of it. Then the score is say, say we score one, two, or three, that this aligns to our daring mission, like, it's a three, definitely aligned, super great. Well, because it's three times five, that's going to give that particular thing a fifteen. But on the flip side, if you said, you know, daring mission is really, I'm going to say that's, we're going to say that's the lowest priority. We're going to say that's a one. And then if we have a project that really does not align with our daring mission, I can't think of one right now, but say we wanted to tint all these windows, because we thought it'd look cool. I don't know. You say, you know what, that's going to be a one. Well, that's going to end up when that particular metric a one, and that's a huge range. And so when you have all these different criteria, that that's what we thought would be helpful. So that's, I guess, the initial explanation. So reaction to criteria. And I guess any thoughts about waiting? Is that something that the board would like to wait? Or is that something you would like us to recommend something? So that that was, that's like a secondary thing that I'm not totally sure how to offer to you right now, so.
I have one quick question. Do you see all three of these areas weighted the same? Or are we, you're talking about weighting the areas as well?
I was talking about weighting each individual criteria. I was trying to categorize them in a way that made some sense, because otherwise probably listing, I don't know, fifteen criteria is a little overwhelming. So it was really just a way to categorize them. Not, there's not an intention to say we're going to weight them within this category. It was just a way to categorize the criteria.
Okay.
Can I suggest one criteria? I don't know which one category it would go into, but it might go into all three, but health and safety. I would think like our boiler situation or a major, the lead paint that we had to renovate. Yeah, health and wellness kind of thing.
Health and wellness, same as safety, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it could be, all those have to do, you know, it's a safety issue. But although it could be a safety issue of protecting the building and the facilities and, you know, door locking mechanisms.
It's a separate thing. If you look at the way that the health and wellness goal is worded, it's about social and emotional learning supports and services to improve mental health and wellbeing. So either we would have to add safety to that or have a separate category, but I think that's.
System improved.
I, I do wonder about having criteria like the strategic plan alignment. There's those three, health and wellness, equity and inclusion. Those could be three to five-year goals, but our science classrooms are going to last for twenty years. Like, why are we saying that these are the three things that we need to be thinking about when we're looking at something that's going to last far longer than any of these individual goals right now?
So are you, just to be clear, are you suggesting that strategic plan alignment should just be one thing and not separated into the three goals that we're focusing on in the three to five years? Because then we're just talking about it generally.
Yes.
So in my mind, it would still capture anything related to the strategic plan.
Correct.
And it would give us the leeway if there was something that addressed multiple goals, we wouldn't have to figure out which one it fits more into or categorize it in both of the goals. We could just say strategic plan alignment. Is that?
Yes.
Does that?
Yes, I take issue with the way that is, because then that you're saying three things worth of importance on strategic plan. I, I, I understand there's a waiting that's going to go on in there, or assignment of a value one through five or something like that. But yeah, I, I just worry that those three things are not necessarily going to be the same three things, three or five years from now. So, yes, strategic plan.
Maybe one, one thing to think about in association with that, because the intention is for this to decide which project happens in the next year or two, you know what I mean? So it could have a long-term benefit, but could impact something that's, that is more urgent due to some of these goals, because like, you know, we don't exactly have action plans like figured out yet, so. So it is, it is about, it is about real, real projects that like, I'm really trying to think about, maybe the next summer that we're going to start.
Well, I think what, what I heard from what Don was saying, if we're talking about alignment with the strategic plan, by splitting them out into the three categories, we're sort of saying they're either all the same you know, weight, or they're not. And if they're not, then we're saying one part of the strategic plan is more important than the other. I don't think so. I don't, I, you know, I think it's, I think by grouping them just to be aligned with the strategic plan in general is a is a, a measurement that we can come up with and weight that appropriately and.
Is there a downside to just saying strategic plan alignment? Because I, I can't think of one, but that doesn't mean there isn't a downside to having it be just one thing. Other than it could potentially lead to shortsightedness in the prioritization of our projects. That would be it.
How would you differentiate between? If you put the weight, if we're going to assign a weight to the strategic plan, it would probably cancel anything else that is not aligned to the strategic plan. Does that make sense?
Yes, but I, I'm sort of okay with that. I'm not sure.
Well, you have to also think about, it's not just the weight, it's also how you score a certain project, right? Right, so if you have one project that scored in two areas, but one project that only scored in one area, you, you're more likely to select the one that gave you more benefit, as an example. So
Sure.
That's where maybe as we start off, you probably give a little more granularity and as we use it more often, then we can maybe start combining areas as we go.
I, I think the intention for why it was originally split into the three was, boy, if we had a project that met our strategic plan, like, wouldn't that, wouldn't that be a good thing? Yeah, that is a good thing. But we would remember, like, really, our strategic plan is three different things. If, if you had a project that could hit all three goals, is that more valuable than a project that would only maybe hit one? And I think that was just the idea, like, how can we capture the idea that, I, I don't know what project, but say there was a particular project that really spoke to all three goals, that that, that, that was a that was an amplified, that that could bring out an amplification, not necessarily to weight them separately, but just to say, well, this really does hit all three, and that, that somehow is more valuable than one that only hit one of them, maybe, but again, that's why this is just a draft.
Yeah, yeah, and I appreciate that. I think that's a good point. My concern is, though, if we're doing some, let's call it mundane, but really essential maintenance, that's kind of hard to tie to the strategic plan, but it's really important. If you give three different weights to strategic plan, are you necessarily deprioritizing something that maybe isn't related to the strategic, strategic plan, but is super important to maintaining our facilities?
And that's where us, we may have to go back and weigh this differently. Like, if your building's falling apart, as an example, that is the highest priority. Right? Or gets the maximum weight. So we have to go back and go through a waiting exercise for all of these and say which ones we absolutely have to do. And then strategic flying, kind of maybe it's important, but it's more important to have a safe building.
Well, and that's where Jim's comment about having a separate health and safety section, I think, really comes into it. Because of course, we want to prioritize the strategic plan, but if something doesn't really tie to the strategic plan, but it's a health and safety issue, that's maintenance that we really cannot defer, then as we do our weighting, that health and Then as we do our waiting, that health and safety category will. Allow it to not get deprioritized by a three part strategic plan.
Yeah. See those kind of situations coming in under urgency?
Uh, ma- maybe I, so I feel like I I missed a context that I should have put on here. The intention, I guess, in my mind, the intention of this criteria was to. To provide priority to the, to the request for remodeling that we've been presented with. All of the things that we already have listed on. On like maintenance of our building and everything like that. So tho- those are. Far and above a higher category, like we, we are going to choose to replace the roof before we're going to renovate. The thing that's under the roof, right?
So we don't have to worry about baking that into this rubric.
That was not, yeah, that was not my my intention. And so, so really like my idea is, once, once we get some of this data. Then then part of that is categorizing this into different areas. So waiting, waiting helps understand some of these. But then even categorizing them. So for example, like things that would go first. Um, well, things that really go first are emergencies and those, uh, we don't really even spend much time talking about, we go do them. The second is safety, safety, um, health and health life, safety things, um, that we would, we would address. Im- immediately and but in those things for sure, take priority. And then I would say it's like maintenance of building, upkeep of building, just. Keeping our roofs going, keeping our parking lots going, those kinds of things are priorities. And those are the things that in our long term capital plan. That's really what you saw. Over, you know, for the the time period that we did up to twenty fifty, um, that's all that stuff. That's all the, the. I would say safety slash maintenance of upkeep of our facilities. In addition to that, there are requests of like even this room, this room has been requested, like they would like to update this room to bring it more in line. With stuff, right? They would like to update this room. So it's like, okay. How do we prioritize this room versus bathrooms versus the cafeteria that you probably walk through? How do we prioritize that? So that's, it's kind of like a zoomer, more zoomed in. Of how do we prioritize this, these groups of projects?
So I'm sorry, on the old slideshow from January, I believe you said, right? So on slide ten, there's the remodel list. So this is primarily to assess priorities that exist on. Remodelist versus these other health, life, safety, building maintenance items that were above, right? This is to help evaluate the remodel list more, more or less.
Yes.
Or entirely. Okay.
Yeah.
And has anything been added to that remodel list since January? I mean, I know we have a couple to be determined, so.
Not yet, but that's mostly because we haven't asked yet.
Right.
So.
Well, it makes more sense when it's with just those twelve line items.
Yeah, I I think. You see if I'm, I'm going to paraphrase here a little bit, the the three categories of the strategic plan, on one hand. You could see the perception where if they met multiple criteria, they'll get ranked higher. Giving the strategic plan maybe an unfair advantage in some ways. Over the others, because there's actually three different categories to take a score in. But then I think about that and I'm thinking. Was that so bad? It's our strategic plan and these are the three priority. Things that we're looking to do in these coming years. Is it so bad that they get a little extra oomph because? They happen to meet all three criteria or two of the strategic plans. So I, I guess I'm. You know, I can see it both ways. I I don't know that there's. A a good or bad. I guess the only thing that I would vote for those, we still, even knowing we're going to have. Emergency kinds of things and stuff prioritized in a different way. There still should be some safety. Component here because some of those. We're going to redo this, this room and maybe part of the deal is. These windows open way too easy or something and that's a component of safety to really keep people from breaking into the building or something. I don't know. That there should be, while it's not an emergency, there should be some component to. The safety of our, the people in the facilities.
Did the administrative team try? Uh, categorizing any of those projects? Did you look at any of the projects and try and apply this rubric?
Um, not yet because, uh, excuse me, sorry, not yet, just because there's no waiting attached to it. So I couldn't. I couldn't really, like I talked through some of them like in my head, but. But until there's a waiting, I can't really walk through. So it's really like getting a draft of the waiting and then run it through and kind of see what the result is because. You know, you could have a fair process, but if you don't have a fair result, you know what I mean? Like, uh, uh. If just the way that works, some. Weird one off thing shows up that after you stand back and look, yeah, that's, I don't, that doesn't really make sense to me, then we kind of need to go back and look through. So.
In answer to your question previously. Um, just my opinion, I would personally like to see the administration recommendation for waiting. And then we can give you some input and feedback if we think that there's some adjustments that we'd like to see. But I feel very comfortable having the administration drive. That discussion and make some recommendations if you're comfortable doing that.
I do like. Don, your idea though, that in part of that exercise. Why not take projects that were currently on the list and say, okay. Once we laid them this way, how do they fall? What? What does this tell us? And if it's, whoa, that we didn't anticipate that, the unintended consequences kind of thing. And then we can come back and say, okay, maybe we need to to tweak, but I like the idea of trying it out.
Specifically on this list, I got a bit confused with the student impact section. Because they almost to me read like reasons why you should score. Something above, right? So for example, health and wellness, like all the components above, right? In the strategic plan would all have a component of. Number of students impacted. Is it academic or is it social? Or behavioral, right? So to me, I almost see that middle section as, well, if you have. A large number of students impacted, you should score it as a high or a five. Um, so. Maybe we have to go back and look at the student impact section and see if those are actually criteria. Or is that what you use to score?
So you're saying re- review. Whether or not the number of students impacted should, should be part of the prioritization?
Part of the scoring, because the waiting is what we say, the weight tells you. How important a certain category is, right? And then each project we score. Essentially to say, how well does it meet that criteria? And the items in blue to me feel a little more like. Criteria we should use to score the project. Versus categories themselves.
Yeah, I I mean, it's what I'm hearing. So tho- those are really like more even descriptors of of the score or like, uh, um, uh, what's the word? Like a rub- rubric.
Yes.
The descriptor, is that the right? Kind of like, like if you're a one means this, two, I don't like, we could say a three means more, I don't know.
Yeah, more.
More than five hundred students. I I don't know what the, like, giving more specific criteria in terms of. What that means. I think the idea was here to, the intention behind those ones were try to say. We, we think of more consideration should be given to things that impact more students. For that criteria, there's other ones that that go in different ways.
Yeah, but they should all somehow be part of strategic planning anyway, unless they are. Uh, the maintenance and safety and all of those, right?
Y- yes, and um, our goals, while not terribly specific, are. Kind of specific in the strategic plan. And so one of the reasons we we kept some of these out here was really to not. Um, ignore some of our foundational strategies. So for example, high impact instruction academics are a huge core of our, of what we do here. But. There's not a specific. Goal in our strategic planning, because those are, those are meant to be growth goals, right? So I think the way it's worded in the strategic plan framework is like growth goals. Ways we want to grow in, but we, and we want to acknowledge those and look at those for sure, but we also want to. Stay with our, I didn't, I didn't categories that is foundational strategies, but like, like academics, those, 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 um. And really the student impact is kind of the core, what are they called? Iman, like, like pillars of MTSS. That right, like academic, s- social, emotional and behavioral. So that really, and that's like just a. A foundational thing we need to be doing, really no matter what our strategic plan says, because that's, that's a growth, this is a core thing we have to do. Just like our financial sys- uh, financial stability is a core thing that we have to, we have to pay attention to.
Then maybe the category name is what's throwing me, maybe we call it strategic goals versus. Like instead of student impact, let's call it something else, because they all have student impact. Maybe that's what's throwing me.
Got it. So you're, you're suggesting maybe. Figure out a different way to say it other than student impact.
Yeah.
I, I'm not sure about that. I, I think student impact is, I I think I understand your concerns, but. I think having the number and and quantifying the academic, social, emotional behavior impact. I I think that's really important.
Yeah, no, I'm saying keep them, but my point was. In your strategic plan alignment, in your strategic. Equity, health, wellness, all of those, they all have student impact, which will be high, otherwise it would not be a goal. They will, you know, your health and wellness will have a. Student impact on dash SEL, right? So that it starts to overlap a bit. So I think what I heard from you is the strategic goals are sort of our growth goals. But then you also have other goals that we want to strive for in addition to those strategic long term goals. So I'm just going to keep the cat criteria the same, but just maybe rename. Student impact as a category.
Do you have, it would be helpful for my understanding if you have a suggestion.
I think you then said. Is it our?
Foundational strategies.
Yeah, growth goals.
Yeah. So the strategic, so what I've listed here on the strategic plan alignment and those particulars, those happen to be our growth goals.
Yep.
Um, and we call them our strategic plan goals, but they're really called our areas we want to grow in. Uh, and the other areas are foundational strategies.
Yep.
Yeah, that that could be, that could be another way.
So I kept going back to, how are you going to rubric? How they positively affect social, emotional, academic, I mean. I think any project is going to have a positive result. So how are you going to differentiate between? All the time, every day, all the students, some of the students, most of the students. I mean, there has to be some kind of a rubric. Assigned to each one of these category, there are each one of these line items within each category.
Yeah, we will have scripters for each rating option in each category.
And perhaps this is where we get back to Dom's suggestion of. Developing this and the waiting and then, you know, sort of testing different projects. And seeing how it impacts the, the, the rating of those projects and, and that might. Identify areas where, oh no, this, we need to tweak this. This is not giving us the results that we want.
Right.
It's the only way I can look at that.
That's not working towards what we're trying to do. What we're trying to do is have an objective. If we have these twelve projects and we're going to wait this, we shouldn't care how it winds up. Because we should be deciding today. I agree with you. I'm not sure how this is going to look, but I can see from the perspective of. If this is what we're saying is a priority, we, we can't make that fit what we want to do as a project.
Of course, I just think, you know, once you develop something, you start to test it. You run, you run things through to see how it comes out and you can see. If there's a flaw in the system by running some examples through it. I'm not saying we, we. Decide subjectively the result and then change the rubric to get the result that we're looking for.
I see, maybe I'm not seeing this. I'm seeing two things missing. One, a rubric for each descriptor and then two the weights, because those are two different things. So we need a rubric to determine whatever that number is going to be. And then we come in and say, but we as a. Board to have decided we are going to wait strategic goals as our top priority versus system improvement. So. I think there's a lot missing before we can make some kind of a recommendation.
Well, it's a draft.
Yeah.
No, I know. And the, the, really, the, the only point was is I, I was just trying to make sure, do I have the right criteria before I work on. Describing what the ratings for each of those are. Like if I flushed out all those ratings, when we realized, you know what, this is the wrong criteria to start with, like, well. Okay, then I should have, I should have, I should have built the foundation of the house before I started putting the walls up. Um, that, that's it. So this is, this is initial draft of just the, the criteria, not. The actual rubric with all the descriptors that we intend to use. So this is like step one. Ish, one and a half.
I don't like the first one. I find it way too generic, which is daring mission alignment. So. It, it's just a generic. Uh, a, a criteria to.
So do, are, do you, you're saying a criteria we should not consider is how does this align with our daring mission?
How well?
I mean, that to me is.
How well does it align with our daring mission?
Yeah, should it be a yes or no? And if it's a no?
Right. I mean, it's not really, that's why I make, I don't see how anything you do is not. Going aligned with daring mission. I, I just find that criteria really vague. Is my point. I know we do everything that aligns to the daring mission, but. I don't, I wouldn't know how to, to.
So for example, where's bathrooms fit into the daring mission? If we don't re, if we don't redo our bathrooms, does that force our students to be nimble and therefore not doing them scores higher? That's, that's the whole point to me behind trying to, to work your way through actually grading one. How do you distinguish between whether it's more important to have bathrooms or science classrooms? So I agree with you that during mission, they're all going to be. That's not going to tell us anything. They're all part of our daring mission. So I, it's either a checkbox, yes or no. If it doesn't support our daring mission, then we throw it out and we go on to other projects. If it does support our daring mission. Then, then we can continue, like that's the checkbox at the very top during mission. Yes or no? If it's a yes, then we can continue to fill out the form. It's a no, then we throw it out and we're not going to do that project. So I agree with you that that might be.
Yeah.
Too vague.
Well, and we have to remember, we developed our strategic plan items.
With the daring mission.
Under the guidance of the daring mission. So is it redundant then to ask? You know, us to evaluate items looking at both.
So Dan, what was your sort of thought process behind adding that? Cause that was. It threw me as in we should be doing everything under the danger.
Um, yeah, so. Give, give me a second to remember. I believe I started with alignment to the strategic plan. I think that was the first thing I wrote. Cause we're all in action planning. I'm like, okay, well, if that, if that aligns like that'll really tell us what project to do. Uh, and then I started looking at the list and I just stood a step back and I kind of looked at the strategic planning goals. And said, you know, those are our growth goals. Um, but. Do we care? Do we, do what? Well, I guess at the point it was me in that moment. Do I think that? Does if some, something aligning to our daring mission is important to consider in a project? I was like, yeah, I mean. I'm gonna, I'm gonna default to yeah, that we should consider how well this aligns to our daring mission. And there, and again, you, you're missing the, I think what you're missing is. The, the intention behind is like how well or how much, we've not really defined those yet. But I think the idea is, I'm assuming that some projects will align. More to our daring mission than others. You, you probably, I don't really know, but you probably could find almost any project to align with something. In the daring mission, because there's a, there's a whole lot of words in that, right? So there's a lot there and it's very robust and very good. But if you wanted to, you could probably find any project to match that. So I guess the sense was. Trying to, trying to get a, a sense of there are, there are probably some things that will align with that stronger than others. I don't know what that is yet. But it was that, is that something that I think we should consider? My sense was, yeah, that's why I put it as a criteria. I, I don't know how to like, what's a one and what's a three? I don't know those yet. Um, and it was the assumption that I think things, things will align stronger. Or less stronger to our mission. Or less stronger to our mission. So that, that was really the thought process, why that got added.
But do we feel that the strategic plan alignment questions capture that? Since the strategic plan is based on the daring mission and. Is, is there a redundancy there? I think is what we're trying to.
I think if you just step back and think about. Our mission statement and what, what our daring mission means. And it's really. You know, that, that point that North Star, whatever that. Guides, that's supposed to guide what we do. And it guides the strategic plan and it guides all these. And to. I'm having a. I understand the idea of how does it help us prioritize things? But by excluding it as a criteria. I think really. I don't wanna say hypocritical, but it's, it's, it just doesn't sit right with me in that. This is our mission. This is where we should be. You know, think that we, you know, I always see our, a, a mission statement as. One of those things that every decision we make as a board or every, you know, that we consider should be aligned with that in some way. Uh. I don't know. I, I have a hard time excluding it, but I also understand.
I'm not saying exclude it. I, I think Don's ideas are a good one, like yeah, the yes or no, and then the strategic plan questions. Or criteria, hopefully that rubric will get at the sliding scale of how much does it align to our daring mission. Uh. Based on where it fits.
Yeah, but you also don't want it to overwhelm. The bathroom versus classroom. Thing is, is very valid. How does a new bathroom really? Speak to the daring mission.
I think that should be.
But it might be very important, you know, you know.
Yeah, but that's where the waiting will then potentially cause of an issue. In the bathroom versus classroom is if we say daring mission is always high. Then it, it could outweigh something that's not daring mission, but still is in need of. A desperate change, you know?
And I also just to probably share what I didn't put on here is like, I, I originally was like D. I'll watch this line with the D part of fishing and then A and then R. And then I felt like I got a little, maybe I'm getting a little overkill now. Um, so I ended up pushing it all into one, uh, rather than listing each one. Cause I went through the same thing with strategic planning, right? Like, man, if it had all six letters of daring, shouldn't that stand out in some way? Um, so.
What's our timeline on this? Like, is this for, you would like to get this done so that you can. Run all of the, the remodels through the rubric. So that you can make a decision so that by, say, November, December, we're already getting ready to. Remodel bathrooms or the, like for next year.
Yes.
So there's a time crunch here.
I mean, we're, we're, we're gonna be diligently working on this. For the next several months to get this going. Uh, cause we do, I want this to inform. Our projects for next year.
Me too. This is really good work. And even though it's only in the initial stage, it will be extremely helpful in guiding not only us, but future boards. In making decisions about renovations.
Uh, I have an idea on the daring. Why don't you use that as a scoring instead of a category? So. Um, anything that meets the daring mission, let's say gets the highest score. And across any of these categories.
Can you say that again?
So instead of including that as a criteria.
Mm-hmm.
You embed the daring, does it, is the, if. Meets daring mission or does not meet daring mission, or you, you include that in the scoring of something. So for example. A bathroom, I'm just gonna throw it out there, will end up with the lower daring mission score than a classroom. So you, if you get two projects, one that's saying up, update a classroom and another one is update the. Um, a bathroom, then we're gonna bounce down to a system improvement criteria, right? It would say what efficiency of system as an example. And the bathroom would. Would score lower. Because the daring mission score is lower, but the classroom would score higher.
I think I'm having a hard time imagining how that working, because it just sounds like another criteria then.
I wonder. Yeah, I wonder if you could almost use like the daring mission alignment. As like additional bonus points kind of thing. Yeah, like you get to the end, you know, you, you run this, you run said project through this filter. It's scored, it's with our various weights that we're going to ultimately agree on. And then the last box, so to speak, that gets checked is. Uh, you know, does this align with the mission? Because truth be told, there are going to be projects that do align. And there are going to be projects that we feel strongly about that just don't align because again bathrooms. So, right? It, it's just kind of.
But if we're gonna stick with that bathroom example.
Yeah, it's a, sorry, sorry.
No, I think it's an important one, because I, I don't think anybody's arguing that renovating bathrooms isn't important, sure. But I'm okay with keeping the daring mission alignment in the criteria. Because. If truth be told. A classroom renovation winds up getting priority. Over a bathroom renovation, that's not a health and safety issue. That's okay, because health and safety issues are separate from this rubric. This is not a. Capital planning criteria rubric. This is a renovation criteria rubric. So if it was a health and safety issue, it's not even here. It's bumped out to a different category and we address it. Regardless of its alignment with daring mission. So I, I'm feeling like keeping daring mission alignment and, and trying to quantify. Whether it's a yes or no, or it's a, does this project align with the daring mission on a scale? One to five, one being lowest. I, I, I still think it, it can be in there as we, as we think about renovations. But that's just, again, I'm sorry to go back to that bathroom example, but, but. As a public school. It's gotta align with the mission. I, I, I agree with Jim that I'm uncomfortable eliminating that as a criteria. But I'm also uncomfortable making it a price of entry. To the rubric. I, I think it should be considered along with everything else and the things that wind up being. Most aligned do wind up having priority over the things that are less aligned, but it's not the only category that it's being rated for, because. If, if a bathroom is kind of old, but it works great and it's not a health and safety issue, I'm okay with it. But this is not a luxury hotel. This is, this is a place where we're optimizing learning. We want this to be. The best learning environment and working environment that we can make it within our necessarily limited budget. So.
I, I, I agree with that. I agree that. That the daring mission should be included in there. I. What I might challenge is there may be some health and safety things that are components of some of these renovations. It wouldn't rise to the point where we have to do this because it's making our kids sick, but it might be. Um, you know, the ventilation in here isn't all that great. We're gonna remodel this room. Part of the reason we're remodeling it is because. Maybe the lighting is bad, maybe the ventilation isn't all that great. It still has some component of a, of a health, safety kind of thing, or the locks are, are bad or the doors are not effective. It would contribute to prioritizing the renovation of this room over something else. But it wouldn't be the primary reason for the renovation that might trigger. It to be, this is an emergency, we gotta fix that boiler. So I. While I agree that, I agree, I guess in, in, in everything you said, that the, the mission should be a component of this. It shouldn't be the ticket to entry. I agree with all that. But I, I wouldn't wanna exclude. Some kind of criteria that would address safety in this list, because there might be, that might be a component of something.
I, I agree with you.
Push it over the edge versus just making a better learning environment.
There's health and safety with the bathrooms. There's health and safety with the cafeteria. There's health and safety with the classrooms. I would agree that it should be a category within organizational alignment.
I, I think I have a perfect example for you would be the fax labs this summer. We discovered the, the sewer lines were rotting and failing underneath those labs. In order to replace them, we had to tear all the plumbing out that. So it became a health and life safety and so the, you know, with the, with the fax labs been high on the list over a science lab. I'm, you know, I'm not the person to make that judgment, but I'm just to make a comparison. Um, but that's. You know, because it was a health and life safety issue caused that remodel of those rooms.
I think you capture some of that with the urgency, the, and, uh, under, um, system improvement, the urgency of deferral, like. We all know if you drive your car well past when it's supposed to have its oil changed, you're gonna be in for a much more expensive repair than if you'd done it when you were supposed to. Um, I, I do think that some of that gets captured with that, understanding that if we continue to wait to do something. We're gonna wind up costing ourselves a lot more money. So I, I appreciate that criteria in particular as it relates to health and safety. I do think health and safety would help to have that fleshed out a little more. Um. But so, so with the addition of a, maybe a health and sa- safety criteria, are we, are we good with running with? Well, I wanted to ask, when I went back and looked at our, when we looked at the strategic plans. The other growth goals, was there, I mean, I know that these are our priority strategic plan goals, but there's going to be something to come up. Do we want? That may not meet one of those three goals and should there not be a criteria that meets one of the other daring goals, whether it is. Uh, student agency, high impact instruction, all the foundational goals that you were talking about that are still a part of our plan. Are, are district goals, but they're not our priority goals. Well, I do think we have to. Purse it out somewhere, you know, I mean, you have to. We, it'll be challenging to put a rubric together with sixty different criteria to it. But. Does.
My understanding was all those other goals. But those are done now, like we, we picked our, what was it, twelve or sixteen, narrowed it down to three. Now those other ones don't matter right now.
Or they got rolled into some of the other.
Well, our focus is those three. Um, but I'm. I'm still, uh, struggling with having a strategic plan split out into three different things. Knowing that fifteen years from now, the decision that we make. Might not have anything to do with those three goals, because our goals are going to change. I'm okay merging that into one.
But the rubric will change. This won't be set in stone.
Sure. And I suppose that will accommodate whatever future decisions.
I would think. What are your thoughts about that, Dan?
Which part?
Updat- updating the rubric as our strategic plan changes.
Yeah, it's, right now it's just set in a, in a spreadsheet, so it's very, very changeable. Um. Yeah, and this is our first time through this. And I, I will say like, I, I've seen other rubrics. I've never seen something quite this. I don't know, complex is not the right word, but, um. I can't think of a word. Um, sure, detail, but like, I, I'm trying to put it a positive, but there's a positive word that I'm trying to use.
Comprehensive.
Well, it's, it's an instrument that's, it's a comprehensive instrument.
Yeah, um, so, and, and I want it to be transparent, like I, I mean, I think, I think a lot of about, and, cause. Cause the, at the end result of this is going to be, this project is happening, this project is not happening. And there are people, there, all, all those projects that are listed, like. There is somewhat an organization that really wants that particular one to happen. There are several people that want any particular one to happen for a variety of reasons. And we're going to have to say. Just like we did with our strategic planning goal, right? We're gonna have to say, th- this is what we can do and this is what we're, we are not able to do at this time. And, and I think part of, part of that is like the sense of like justice and fairness. And I think part of that is having a fair process. Like if you have a fair process that's transparent, so that everybody sees this criteria and they know. And if you treat people fairly, so when you're talking with them, you're treating them fairly. If the end result is not what they really wanted, you know, then sometimes people are un- understandable, like, okay, I get that I didn't want, but the process was fair and I was heard. Um, and you know, I don't, you don't always necessarily get the outcome, outcome you want. So. So part of this is trying to kind of think through that process is because we're gonna have to say no to some things. Uh, and that's just not, we've not. I mean, we've been in that position many times with projects for sure. Um, but you know, I, I wanna, I wanna get a better systematic, systematic approach to it.
Here's what I've seen, like we use similar processes when you're looking at making multi-million dollar investments. At work, right? Especially if you have like twos. Technology vendors and you need to pick one, and this is like a ten year investment, right? Um, what we've seen happens is often you almost wanna, the next pass of this should be. Describe your criteria. For scoring. And as you develop that, you might go back and adjust the categories. So I think this is at a good enough place where you could now, let's say, define the criteria. Uh, for scoring each one of these, because they may or may not be the same. I mean, why, the reason why I would pick a five. For strategic plan alignment, health and wellness may not be the same reason why I pick a five for number of students impacted. Like the reason behind that number could be different. You don't have to make it that crazy, but you know, you may end up there. So I'd say let's maybe, what I would recommend is. To see what the scoring looks like, because then you can put both of them together and see, do they make sense together? I think my struggle right now is I'm seeing one side of it and not the other. And then we put some examples through it. And see, so for this project, make a makeup, made up project, you don't have to select an existing one or a future one, just a. Made up project and say, here is how these two would score. And I think that will help me understand how this will play out.
Yes, and making sure that we're not engineering a process to get. I'm gonna use. A result that I'm biased toward. This, and this with the thing that Dan really wanted to do most, because that, that's not, that doesn't serve the interests of our organization, right? So, yeah, I, 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 so I, I think a, a, a next logical step is even take this idea of strategic plan separaters. You know, we have a D L T tomorrow that we could bring this to and talk, talk about this exact thing, like what are, what are people's thoughts and, and then add more, add more flesh to this. Um, it's gonna be, it's gonna get a much longer document next time, so. Get your reading. Reading charts ready.
Emma, did you wanna say something? You brought the mic close.
I did.
Okay.
And then I was like, okay, I'll just stay to myself. But no, I wanted to, um, speak to the process itself. Just to remind us that the strategic plan is a guided, a guiding document that is living and breathing. So even as it begins to enter its term life at the third or fourth year. One of the things that we'll come back to when we start the next strategic plan process. Is we'll go over all the documentation, all the data. Um, all of our goals from this strategic plan to see what needs to carry on. So that speaks to. What you said earlier, like what does this look like in five, ten, fifteen? But that will be part of that process that we'll take. Um, in addition to any. Um, any documents such as this one that Dan would create. Once we enter into that new strategic plan, then it will update based on those goals or those target areas that we identify. So it just continues to grow as we grow as a district. Um, and then in regards to the organizational alignment. Um, which is actually, I went back through and looked at my data from, um, when we met with teachers last week. And one of the things that actually came out of the health and wellness was bathrooms. Um, and, um, so just for an example from a health and wellness. They talked about the privacy that's needed for students and that space needed for students. But when you look at it from an equity point, um, they talked about the need for changing facilities. Because most of our bathrooms do not have changing facilities for our students with special needs. So that goes into an equity piece. So I think that it's a rating, but it's also as we are looking at each of our renovations. Making sure that we are considering equity, that we're considering safety, that we're considering wellness and making sure that we're looking at that. As, as we began to look. As as we began to look at the renovation, so just wanted to share that.
Thank you.
Thank you. That that added a lot of dimension. Appreciate it.
Clarity. Thank you.
I think where I was trying to go with the organizational alignment is trying to do a, if we're going to weight it. I I agree with you separating it into the three. I don't know how. But we did say that those other goals are important to our district. It is something that we're going to, so you say. Okay, is it a priority goal or does it need a regular goal? That's what I was trying to differentiate between, and it might make the weighting a little bit easier if. We know we're going to add more weight to those that are in our strategic plan as a priority goal.
Anything else, any other? Comments on that? Thank you, Dan, and everyone who did so much work on this. We will look forward to. This being fleshed out as time goes on.
Version two point oh.
Yeah.
Or one point two, however that works.
Uh, all right, uh, moving on to uh fiscal year twenty twenty two employee compensation report.
Yes, so this is an annual requirement um that by October first, uh, this. This information is presented uh at a board meeting. And so uh as tradition, we show this to you at the committee meeting. And let you know that this will be presented at the September board meeting. There's no action to take. There's nothing to approve. This is just an informational report that has to be presented to the board at a board meeting. So it's last year's data. And it's not every position, it's not every cost of every position, it's. The positions that ISB has said. Report on these ones and it's these particular forms of compensation to report on. There are others. If you asked me to make my own list, my list would look different, but this is what the law requires.
Meeting the requirements, okay. Any questions, comments? Moving on to rental labor charges uh for fiscal year twenty twenty three.
So this one we normally would do early, but kind of due to everything else going on, we learn, you know, a lot of times we consider um actual rates of pay. For that impact our labor rate charges and so uh until we knew our rates of pay, there was a little bit difficult to suggest new rates of pay. Um, so John and actually Brian went through this a lot and I'm sure it's great. You want, you want, you you really work on this.
Again, these are labor rates that we charge people that rent our facilities. Um, the labor rates are um based off of, obviously, we have to then pay people. So we pay our own people to work some of these events. Um, and so the rates are um sometimes the exact amount we're paying them. Um, plus um a little percentage, um, and some of them are an average, for example, custodial labor. Depends on who is the person working that event. They all earn a different money, so. You know, we kind of take that into effect and we, uh, myself, John Heron, John Fischel, who oversees rentals, we look at this every year. Make sure that we are not losing money when we are paying people to work uh rental then, so.
Is there a typo on the student lifeguards? For twenty one, twenty two?
Yes, the, yeah, the last year's number, it it was the wrong formula.
Talking about.
I was just looking at the number twenty one, twenty two uh versus twenty two, twenty three, and that was the one that stood out like, whoa, why is that?
If you add the salary and benefits, the last year's number doesn't add up to that.
Yes, yeah.
It's updated.
Correct.
Thank you. Any questions about this? Comments?
One week.
One week.
What, sorry, one week. Yes, I'll be there.
Thank you.
Okay, now we know Lisa will be there next week. Moving on, um, Verge uh update, energy update.
Yeah, so Verge, we had our meeting and so they presented uh their feasibility study uh to us and so. My initial uh interest in bringing this to be transparent, here's here's the information that they shared with us. Uh, so Don, Mark and myself were part of that meeting. Uh, we asked probably more questions than they thought we were going to ask. Um, so it was it was good. It was helpful to see um areas that they that they saw. Um, there is definitely overlap with things that we kind of already have been thinking about, which. Is helpful to know that, you know, we weren't totally off base in some things that we were looking at. Um, so they, so they they come with ideas of what we could do um regarding various categories of. Uh, roofing is a big thing for sure, um, energy use, they'll they'll now analyze. Uh, lighting, HVAC, those kinds of things. Um, and so. Uh, and in solar, for example, so they have a lot of ideas. Um, I think uh where. Where I believe we're at right now is we're still trying to kind of digest this a bit and see kind of where. Um, where we think realistically the next steps are for us. Um, part of what Verge is doing is in is in. Context of the entire township, uh, which is the. I don't know, what's the name?
V Turk.
V Turk.
Township Energy Resiliency Committee.
Thank you. Um, so. They uh, so they're trying to see from a. Township wide, what is everybody interested in and then can they get economies of scale, I guess, with that? So for example, like uh. Charging and. Hard charging stations, thank you. Um, like if we're interested in that and then the township's interested in that and these other, everybody's interested in that, okay, let's look at. How can we do this in a bulk, in a bulk sense? Or if everybody said, yeah, we all want to do our roofs all at the same time, is there a bulk thing to do there? Um, so so that's part of what they're interested in that I I don't, I'm not prepared really to have an answer for them yet. Um, and I think the the other step is, you know, a a lot of the information they presented on is based on um. A guaranteeing energy savings. Project, which um is legally allowed by by law. Um, but I I need to do some homework, uh, because I'm. Um, I've never done one myself, but I have been in districts right before they do one and right after they did one. And. I don't know how well some of them have worked out, so I want to be careful because at the end of the day. It to do, you're you're borrowing money. That that's really what this is. It's borrowing money to pay for something, so. Normally, when you pay for something, you have to bid it out. This is a way basically that lets you not bid it out. You can engage with services as long as you're guaranteed to save energy. The the state says like, go ahead, but I want to be very careful around that, so. So, so I get my my first reaction, this is, here's the information that they have that they shared with us. There are, there is some overlap with our long-term capital line that we already have. We still need to, I think as the administration, spend more time on this and flesh out. Um, what we think are reasonable next steps for us. So, yeah, I think, I think that's where, I think that's where that is. Some of the numbers there here, they're they're fine numbers. I want to. Look at some of my own numbers too. Um, so we just want to kind of flush it out a bit more.
They did say that they they don't actually produce any products. They don't sell any products. They're they're energy management. Um, and as a result, they they don't prescribe which vendor we would necessarily go for. So the bidding process, that question came up a few times, because all of these are governmental agencies that are working together and they're all playing by the same rules. And so she did say that um. We would still have the ability to bid projects out. Um, because we have to. So I'm. I I'm not exactly sure. Why you're still hesitant on that one, because we did ask for that one specifically. So I don't know if there's other parts of the energy management system that they're. That they're allowed to like subvert and get around and be able to put things in without going through a bid process. I I I'm not sure, but I agree with you. That's something that we need to be sure about, because if they're going to buy something in bulk, then that. Kind of tells us that we know who's supplying it in bulk and if we're going to get it that way, we're not really bidding it out, are we? So I, I see where Dan's coming from on this. They uh, if you saw the screen, the projected savings are not. As big as I thought they would be, but they're not unsubstantial.
You're talking about page seven?
Um, I am on page seven. So a million dollars a year in savings is. Nothing to sneeze at. Um, but essentially, you're right, we're we're entering into an agreement that says that we're going to spend money, knowing that they're going to guarantee that we save money. Is that fair?
Uh, yeah, I mean, like, it's. It's kind of like the adage, like, you got to spend money to make money, like, you got to spend money to save money, so.
And the total number of projects that they presented us with is outside of our budget right now.
For sure.
Right, so that's that's another issue. And they're kind of like, well, if all of these groups are going to go into it now, our timeframe has shrunk, so. You know, we only have a couple of years before whatever grants we're looking for are going to dry up and. So they kind of want to strike and we're a little bit more.
Well, because we would have to commit to spend money without any guarantee of grant money.
Correct. They'll help us towards grant money, but they didn't actually say. How much of this would be grant savings?
Because I don't think they can guarantee how much grant money they could.
Yeah, the this was, the way this was presented, which again, we didn't necessarily know what they were going to present to us. I think this largely was presented as an energy savings performance contracting.
Right.
Um, so. That's a piece of the puzzle I still don't know.
Did they?
An important piece of the puzzle for sure. Sorry.
Did they um? Happen to review with you, I I didn't see anything in the presentation, but uh review anything with regard to like banking? The energy, like batteries, like in lieu of generators?
No.
Do we know of any? You know, significant financial benefit that that could, so rather that like. They're solar during the day. But that goes back to the grid, so rather than, I mean, you use it, but whatever's whatever's extra goes back to the grid. Alternately or alternatively, you could bank that energy. And draw from your batteries for different processes that happen within the buildings or. Um, use those reserves in times of outages. Or um, use those reserves to power nighttime processes. So I think it could be. Useful information to see what that means monetarily speaking in terms of savings. Or, you know, well, I guess savings ultimately.
I think that they. They don't address that because it's cost prohibitive. We did look at it in a project, uh, when I was at Stevenson. And the size of the battery storage unit in order to power one portion of the building, the new addition that they were going to put in. Would encompass an entire floor, like we would have to put a sub-basement in. Just to house the batteries and we would get maybe twenty four hours out of that. And so the idea. Of being able to bank energy is is kind of a tough one if you're using.
That's a super fair point. My only counter to that would be, was a, how many years ago was that?
Uh, this is just before the new addition, so they just opened it two years ago, so it's been four, five years ago.
Yeah, I mean, I, there may be. Batteries every year are just becoming such a, right, uh, maybe just something to consider.
Tesla batteries, but.
Yeah, I think though, I think the way they went at this one was trying to account for. This is the thing that I kept asking them questions about, like, there's solar revenue that's listed in their chart, like, they tried to account for it. I think that way in terms of giving the money back on the grid. That's just the way they went about that one.
I look forward to you um giving us more information once you digest this, because I certainly don't have the expertise to fully digest this. And even make any. Understanding of its implications on our potential deci- decisions that we have to make about capital expenditures.
I had sort of a general question is. In terms of funding it, is the township going to provide funding or are we to find this money ourselves?
The way that this in particular is set up right now is that. We are providing the funding, we're borrowing the money. And then we will pay that back. That's just how this is set up. Part of what the idea for the energy.
Commission.
Commission, thank you, sorry. Was, is there ways, are there ways to leverage grants that are available? That, and grants would be free money, more or less. That is still a missing piece that we did not get in this part, so that's something that I'm curious about.
The the township is providing somebody to uh help write grants and Verge is also providing help to write grants.
These grants come from the state or the federal?
State and federal.
So that that just is information that was not included in the information that we had that. I don't think it it hit me when we were in the room that I didn't see that, but like now sitting here, it made me realize like that was information we just did, we don't have yet.
So we'll be getting more details on that later. Any other questions or comments on? Okay. Uh, last item, uh, V H S, V, not last item, V H H S large format printer. Disposal of that obsolete equipment will be voting on that at the meeting next Monday. Any comments or questions on that? Nope. Okay. Any future agenda items? Other than the ones we've already discussed that will be ongoing.
Coming next month is you'll have an estimate for the tax levy, which will be a significant thing to consider, especially this year. With the Libertyville TIF running off and with CPI being as high as it is. So I'll have some data for you at our next, at October.
That will be an interesting conversation. Okay, any other ones? All right, then we shall adjourn facilities and finance at eight twenty.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.